Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May 2, 2017. Item number one, if we could call the roll.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mogul.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, approval agendas. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, we will be pulling 4B1 off of the consent agenda and we hope to have that brought back on 16 May.
Okay, 4B1 is off. Are there any other changes? If not, Councilmember Whiting?
Move to approve the agenda as modified.
I have a motion, a second by Councilor Mogul. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, consent business. Any adds, subtractions? Councilmember?
One, it was, uh, 4C5?
4B5?
C, Charlie.
Oh, 4C5. Others? Councilmember Luce?
I follow mine in like we're supposed to, but I guess that doesn't work at, uh, 4B4 or C1 or C4.
4B4, C1, the other one? C4?
C4.
C4, you pulled two, Councilor Luce?
Three.
4B4?
C1.
4C1?
C4.
And to address Councilor Luce's concerns, yes, Councilor Luce did call me. The purpose of that was to make sure that we knew about it ahead of time on a staff level so we could be prepared for that. But it still requires Councilor Luce to make that motion here on City Council.
Uh, Councilor Lehman?
Can we have that read off so we got this accurate?
So I have, uh, trying to do it in order here. 4B4, 4C1, 4C4, and 4C5. Those are the four I have. Is that correct? Okay, Councilor Luce or Lehman?
I move the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Whiting. Before we vote, we will read the modified consent agenda. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the consent agenda items from May 2 of 2017. 4B2 approves quotes and awards a contract to Kruger Escavating Incorporated for Valley Park 11th Edition drainage channel improvements and approves a 15% contingency amount for this project for use by the city engineer and authorizing change orders or quantity adjustments. 4B3 adopts resolution number eight, excuse me, 7877, which approves a wetland replacement plan for the Valley Fair Expansion Project. 4B5 adopts resolution number 7881, which authorizes appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement for professional and technical services with the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation. 4C2 approves the minutes of the April 18, 2017 council meeting. And 4C3 adopts resolution number 7870, which closes the 2004B refunding bonds, 2006A improvement bonds, and 2007A improvement bonds.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda has been read. Motion's been made. In second, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, thank you very much. We will move ahead then to business removed from consent. In order then, 4B4 and Councilor Lehman, you pull us?
It's Councilor Luce.
Oh, Councilor Luce, I apologize.
Yeah, I have to question why the Met Council can dictate to us that we have to have a monitoring program and we have to pay for it. I think if they want a monitoring program, they should pay for their own monitoring program.
Bruce?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council and Councilor Luce, um, this is something the city's been doing since 2007. It's a program that seems to gather valuable information. It's a volunteer program and we get valuable information about the lake quality. All we have, all we're responsible for the testing. Um, I think it's a valued program. Um, we're not paying for the volunteers. We have a, a family that has agreed to do this since, um, 2007. So it's something that Jamie Polly I know started or actually it might even start before her and it's something that my natural resources technician Jacob got the program and, uh, it does require the council to sign an agreement which is attached. I also put in the activity report, you saw the latest report, it's up to 2014, but we should be getting 2015 and 2016 soon. We did see some valuable information with Lake Odow. It's got graded up to B. So it's, we've seen some improvements. Now, part of that, I think, is the amount of rain we've been getting the last three years. Um, you know, the old adage, the solution to pollution is dilution. That might be something that's going on. I know it's kinda corny.
We're gonna miss that stuff.
But it's, that's something that we think, you know, they wanna do it more long-term. If we continue to do the test and we can see, are we still getting more improvements? Why are we getting improvements as our water quality program or whatever, why we're getting, well, they're trying to analyze that. But it's a program that the Met Council does and we've been involved since 2007.
Councilor Lehman?
Do we know if there's other dollars involved here from township or county or anything else, or is it just all Shakopee?
Um, as far as I know, I don't, I don't know that information. I just know the lake is in Shakopee, so we have taken ownership of that lake.
Councilor Whiting?
No, I think Lake Odow is a well-used lake, a lot of houses around it. The cost we're talking about is $550 to do the sampling. So I would make a motion to authorize the appropriate, appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement to participate in the Metropolitan Council 2017 Citizen Assisted Monitoring Program.
Uh, second by Councilor Mogul. Further discussion? Councilor Luce, did that help answer some of your questions or?
Yes.
Uh, further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to 4C1 then. And 4C1 is a city bill. Let's, uh, Councilor Luce?
I just came across this, uh, recently, within the last hour. Um, we've got a $7,931 bill for Quarry Lake project for operating supplies. That seems awful high for operating supplies.
Page is that?
Page 20. For a park that isn't technically open yet.
Well, we will have to get that information to you tomorrow, Councilor Luce. We don't have it in front of us right now.
Councilor Lehman?
Can we get that information to all of us?
Yes, sir. I'll send it out to everybody.
Councilor Whiting?
Uh, with that information coming, uh, understood, uh, I'll move to approve the bills and electronic funds transfers in the amount of $1,181,794.28. Payroll transfers in the amount of $474,486.39 for a total of $1,656,280.67.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mogul. Uh, further discussion, discussion, Councilor Lehman?
If we vote no, we'd save all that money, wouldn't we? No. Just kidding.
We'll get more information on that?
On the, yeah, the line item for Quarry Lake.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Uh, further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All four to one. Thank you. I apologize for that. Moving ahead to 4C5 or 4C4, revised purchasing policy. And, uh, Councilor Luce?
Yeah, I don't know that I'm comfortable with bumping it up by $10,000 on the purchasing threshold. Uh, just wanted to put my point of view out there. Uh, $15,000 is quite a bit. We've got how many managers, if they all purchase something, that adds up fairly quickly. It becomes a large sum of money. I mean, if they do it every month, we're, yeah.
Councilor Lehman?
I, Mayor, I had the same concern, but I was looking at, uh, the last time it was adjusted was 2014. So realistically, by the time this really gets fully enacted, it's gonna be four years, um, to 18. And then the, um, the other thing I under, I guess, my understanding is that even the, the 15 or the 25 are directly budgeted items, uh, through the budgeting process. So if, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. And, and the, the bigger point is, is that council previously had passed the $25,000, but never did fix the ordinance. And all we're doing is going.
Making them align.
And, and making them come together.
Okay.
And, and then it's, Mayor, if I can continue, then I think it's, uh, if I'm understanding, because we're gonna talk a little more about this on the next one, that's why I took that off. But the, uh, the purchasing policy, anything over set dollar amounts, over that amount, has other parameters that it has to follow as far as okay's and so on.
Yep, that's on the, yep.
Right.
He's kinda, one is to align the policy and then the other one dictates some terms.
Yes, sir. And a couple of things to keep in mind. Uh, what this also does is it puts basically two sets of eyes on everything that's purchased in, in the city that currently does not occur. This policy makes that happen. The other piece is, is don't forget that any kind of a real estate or anything that touches land, even if it's like 50 cents, uh, has to be approved by council as well. Everything that happens will have to be budgeted as part of the budgeting process. So, uh, uh, this is essentially setting the stage for where we go with, uh, the, the.
Automated.
Automated budgeting, uh, uh, system that we're putting in place.
Okay. Questions answered? Okay, other discussion? Councilor Mayor Whiting?
I'll offer resolution number 7875 approving the revised purchasing policy along with ordinance number 961 amending the city code 32.15D7 to align purchasing thresholds.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll say.
And a second by Councilor Lehman. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, moving on to 4C5, delegation of authority to review claims prior to payment. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, this is, I took this off consent. I did notify staff. Um, at our workshop, when we discussed this briefly, it was, Kathy had some, had good points and I appreciate them points. I'm not really stuck one way or the other. I guess it's, from my standpoint, I saw that there was some on council that were going either way, so I'm not really sure where the majority is. Um, and I could go either way. I guess, since I received this on Friday, um, you know, I looked at it over the weekend, didn't have a whole lot of time to dig down into the details with staff. So I guess I'd like to take just a couple of minutes and, and ask our finance director to make, to clarify my thought process on how this operates. One of the concerns that I had in my mind was, we as a council are, are responsible for the finances of the city and if we're gonna delegate that authority, um, after the fact, so we're responsible for the finances, but somebody else is spending it and we don't, we're not even authorizing until after it's been spent. Um, and then part of me said, well, we now have a new process monthly where you have your little chart that you put up like we're gonna do later on the agenda that shows all the expenses with their little up and down and straight arrows and colored arrows and all your, uh, uh, revenues and, and where they are compared to last year, where they are according to the budgeting expectations. Um, so it, so even if we go the one way, the, the new way with this, that, is that then become the checks and balances because that check, council check registers is viewable monthly in that statement form?
Mr. Nelson, Darren?
Um, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lehman, uh, that's one piece of it. So we gotta look at our total internal controls. Um, so we look at our internal controls with the new purchasing policy. We now have, we require at least two touches on that. We require items above $25,000 for contract purchases. Obviously, they come to council, they get approval. It's all those that are all encompassing is what kinda builds those internal controls. Part of that is the monthly financial review. Um, that all plays into it as well too, but it's not just one standalone item. Um, and this, this statute really, it's more geared towards more sophisticated cities like us where we have, we have an independent audit. Um, we, we have, um, internal controls that are set. Um, smaller cities don't have this option legally under the statute because of, um, their lack of segregation duties and such like that, whereas we have, uh, those strong controls in place. So it's gotta be all encompassing. It's making sure that purchases are in the budget, making sure that they're having that second touch, um, having a supervisor review or a direct review or a city administrator review and having the council being aware of what's there as well too. So the check registers, if this were to pass, would be informational purposes. You would delegate that authority to release, basically release those checks prior to official action on the council. So there would be no official action by the council. It would be, um, basically just the city administrator authorizing us to release those checks then basically on a weekly basis. But you would still see the information. You just wouldn't be able, you wouldn't have an official action on it.
Councilor Lehman?
Maybe I'll ask question in a different way. Is it safe to assume that any of these, uh, payments being made, well, let me back up. Um, a department personnel that is, something's getting paid, um, that we don't see in advance, is one of the criteria that that is an, an item that is in the budget?
As per the, uh, Councilmember, uh, Lehman, as per the purchasing policy, that is part of that prerequisite requisite is that is part of that budget allotment. If we don't have it in that budget allotment, it's outside of that. That's where we kinda communicated that, um, anything outside of that, we're gonna come to the council and say, hey, we need a, a budget amendment, um, that sort of thing. That would still obviously come to the council for approval on, on that end of it. But these are mainly day-to-day operational type of things. Um, the big one-off type things that are, are unique, contracts, projects, uh, those will still come to council for approval on the front end of those projects and then we would make obviously the payments afterwards on that.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Nelson, there was a discussion about a police interceptor that we took, uh, um, delivery of and there was some billing error according to the dealership and then, you know, how, how would we as a council ever stop that if there was some, I see it's gonna self-correct here in this current situation, but then I was thinking about how I would apply that to the.
It's, you're right, Mr. Mayor. It's a, you know, the, the statutes are a little bit antiquated and it's a little bit kinda, and they're so old school, but the really geared towards small organizations where you got a, a small city, about a couple hundred people where, well, maybe the mayor is signing every check and the city clerk is signing every check, um, and actually view, or actually physically signing the checks and such like that. In a situation like this, uh, with that police interceptor, that's, I mean, it kinda made it through agencies throughout the whole state on that end of it. And we did find clarification on that too, and so, uh, we were billed the correct amount on that one and, uh, the dealership is working on getting us a correction.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And another point to, to keep in mind is, is that when, when we have, uh, things like that occur, like that police interceptor, then we have the responsibility to go back and get that. If it was, for example, an overcharge, we have the responsibility to go back and get that.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, uh, if, if there are things that, for whatever reason, slip through the cracks, once we become aware of them, and, and that's really no different than if the council approves it. So if a council approves it or, or if I were to approve it, we still have the responsibility to go back and make sure that, uh, uh, the, the residents of Shakopee and taxpayers are, are getting their due from those particular issues.
Councilor Whiting?
If I may, and the other, the other issue is, is that we really want to start looking at opportunities, if we can do fast turnarounds of getting some kind of a, a, a rebate or a, a better deal, you know, as opposed to saying, well, it's gonna take 30 days for us to do it. If we can, if we can get this to you in seven days, can you knock off a couple percentage? And, and we really want the opportunity to do that. Those, those are just kind of what we're thinking from the staff.
Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, typically, I wouldn't be in favor of this type of policy governance, uh, where you're, we're giving up our right for general oversight. I think as elected, that's kinda what we're up here to do, but understanding where we are as a city and our finance, uh, director and, uh, I do like the idea of negotiating terms, uh, and the potential of doing some of that. So I, I hedged a little bit, but I, I, I can accept this because I do understand that it does take us a while to have another meeting and move forward with it.
Councilor Luce?
That was my point exactly. I mean, uh, personally, I'd like to see some proof that we can get some deducts on it before we vote on it, but, um, if staff is confident that we can get some percentages off, I would, you know, when they come about, I would like to have them brought to our attention.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we really, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
We, we really wanna, wanna make that attempt. I, there are no guarantees there. We wanna make that attempt and then, uh, we'd be more than happy to report that to, uh, to council as we, as part of that process.
Mr. Thompson, you on a way, uh, follow-up?
You know, the other point was, uh, the police interceptor is at with the local TV channels investigative report. Okay, I just wanna make sure we're aware of that.
Mr. Thompson, weigh in on this discussion?
Just the one point and maybe for both of the council members, the public. The policy doesn't give the staff any authority to make payments that haven't been authorized previously by the council. Example, you're, I just signed the street improvement construction contract for this year. If there's a change order that's necessary and that the change order still needs to come back, the council will still need to approve that. What this does is then give staff the authority to sign the check before you actually approve the claim. So maybe that'll help me understand. This isn't giving staff any, or city administrator particularly, any additional authority to authorize payments that are needed to be authorized by the council.
Mr. Thompson, in, uh, other cities, they have a policy like this?
Yes.
That you're aware?
Yes, and, and.
And it is a size thing?
It's a, yes, it's, it's the more, the bigger cities with the more sophisticated staffs that have annual audits, good accounting controls, they're the ones that implement this.
Thank you for, uh, discussion. Further, Councilor Mogul?
I'd like to recommend approval of resolution number 7876, which delegates the council's authority to pay claims to the city administrator.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Whiting. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for the discussion. Um, that clears up our consent agenda. Councilor, uh, Whiting?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
On 7A, vacation of a public easement. And a second by Councilor Mogul. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the public hearing is open. Um, Mr. Noble?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience, uh, this is a public hearing, um, that was presented to you previously. We are, uh, working with the applicant, which is Shakopee, Medawak and Sioux community, on some language in, in a draft resolution and a letter of understanding that we'll be bringing forward to you in May for the May 16 meeting. So we're asking that you, uh, continue this public hearing until that date. And this is a public hearing, so if anybody is here from the public that would like to talk about this, certainly would ask that you allow them to do that. But, uh, we asked for a continuance to May 16th. We're gonna be meeting with, uh, Shakopee, Medawak and Sioux community later this week and we should have that language worked out then and it should be ready for you for the May 16th meeting. So are there any questions for staff?
Councilor Lehman?
Do you have a picture you can put up on a screen?
I have, uh, included one in the packet that the council has.
This picture doesn't do much, so maybe we could put that up and blow it up a little bit and make sure I'm looking at the right road or the road that is on the map, but really isn't there.
Isn't a road.
Right.
Councilor, uh, Luce?
I'm speaking of my.
It, it's a, situation is there's a, a roadway easement. I'm not sure if we're gonna get document camera here. Um, we'll see if I get some help back there. Short of showing this to you, this is gonna be. Short of showing this to you, this is going to be hard for you to see. We'll see if we get something up, but it is property that is south of Eaglewood Drive, which is in the southeast portion of the city, north of 160th Street. Yeah, I'm not going to have that. And just east of Marshall Road.
We've lost our screen.
Okay.
Am I bad luck?
This is a.
Two meetings ago.
Does it serve any residents?
No, it does not. It is land that is owned by Shakopee-Meadowack and Sioux community. It, and are you going to be able to see this screen on, you're not getting anything?
We've got nothing.
So I take it that this property was partially are going to be developed by a developer and then bought by our community to the, to the south? And then we had a city road plan for that?
They've owned this land for many years. They provided the road.
Easement, oh.
They proposed a road easement. That road easement is not something that is consistent with what the city, the county, or the SMSC is looking for. So they're asking for a vacation. City is support of this, the county is support, in support of this. It's just working the language. Right now, the easement essentially runs from this street and out to Marshall, and county does not want an access point out to Marshall. Looking for language that would bring a road down to 160th Street. So it's just, we've got the language almost there, but we just got to go through some final details, so.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, the reason I asked for the picture was this right here. Does the eas, does the request go up to here? Because this is a public road here, correct?
It is from.
Marshall Road, what's it called? It's called Bridge, Eaglewood Drive?
Yeah.
This is a public street here, correct?
And the public street starts to the north of that.
Right.
This is where your pinpoint is, is a roadway easement on their property.
Right. Here's what I'm getting at. If this road is here.
Work here up.
Oh, if this road is here and we, and it stops, what distance is that, and does it create an overlink cul-de-sac? That was my question.
If that roadway easement is vacated.
Yep.
We would ask for a new roadway that will go all the way down to another public street, so there will not be.
Giving up one and going to try to get another easement.
Yes.
That's in a better alignment.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a short stub of public street to the north of the SMSC property, but everything that's on their property is roadway easement, which would be vacated.
Okay. We got the full force of the city staff at work here today. That's great. Counselor Lewis?
So basically, if we want to boil this down, they asked for a roadway, they changed their mind, the county's in favor of it. I see no point in arguing about it. Let them come back with something when they're ready.
All right. This is a, for other questions of staff? This is a public hearing. Would any interested party like to come forward, resident may comment during the open public hearing? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Member Lehman?
I'll make a motion to close, continue the public hearing to May 16th, 2017.
A second. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis to continue further dis.
The 16th?
Yes.
16th of 2017.
Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, those opposed? Motion passes. Close the public hearing.
Nope, it was continued until.
Or continued, I apologize. All right, moving ahead, Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to open a public hearing on 12321 Marystown Road, annexation.
I have a motion to open a public hearing and a second by Counselor Mokel. Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Noble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. This is the first of four annexation requests we're going to be looking at here. What, what is on the slide, and hopefully on the screen in front of you, is, is kind of a summary of the four annexation requests. Letter A is Powers' property, letter B is the D.R. Horton proposal, letter C is a request from Friendship Baptist Church, and letter D is a city request. And I will, just wanted to kind of show you in context where those four requests are for. There are public hearings, we'll want to look at each one independently, so. First one that you opened up the public hearing for is for property that Greg Powers, on behalf of the Irene Powers Estate, is requesting an annexation of. This is at the corner of Marystown Road, which is, Marystown Road runs north-south, 17th Avenue runs east-west just to the south, and then 169 is just to the north. Windermere Platte is just adjacent to the, to the west. It's approximately 3.4 acres, and the applicant is, is looking, I believe he's getting some interest in developing the property. So first step in order to do that would to be annex this property into the city. Planning Commission has looked at this, is a recommended approval, and staff is also recommending approval. Have provided a resolution in support of that. Are there any questions?
Questions of staff? Questions of staff, Counselor Lewis?
This is directed at Mr. Lonnie. This looks like it's surrounded on three sides by city already. Are city utilities within reach of this?
There, the parcel to the east, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lewis, which is Jackson Elementary, that does have sewer and water. So they are nearby, it can be extended through, I believe, the rest of the school district property to that site, so they're close.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? If not, thank you. This is a public hearing with the applicant and/or their representatives like to make comment on this. This is a public hearing, if a resident would like to make comment on this annexation proposal? Seeing none? Counselor Lehman?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Close the public hearing. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counselor Member Lehman?
I have a resolution 7871, resolution approving the annexation of property formerly known as 12321 Marystown Road. Do we need the property identification numbers?
A second.
Move its adoption.
I have a motion by Counselor Lehman, a second by Counselor Lewis. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to 4, 47C, Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a second by Counselor Whiting to open a publish, public hearing. Mr. Noble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the.
Wait. This is going pretty fast. There is a motion, a second on the table. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, public hearing's open. Mr. Noble, present.
Just trying to.
You can skip that first part, though.
Sorry.
He needs hearing with his glass.
This is an annexation request for property that is in possession or under ownership of D.R. Horton. This is, should this annexation be approved, would be incorporated into the Windermere Platte, which the council saw recently for, for location purposes. Again, this is Marystown Road, this is 17th Avenue, just to the north and east is where the Powers' annexation request is. This area is approximately 1.4 acres. Again, Planning Commission did review this and recommended approval. There is a draft resolution for the council's consideration. That draft resolution includes language referring to an exhibit which includes the legal description, so I don't think you would need to include the PIDs in your motion. They are in the exhibit that's included in the draft resolution. One other item I should reference, and it's also included in your packet, again, there's four annexation requests, this is the second of the four. We did receive a letter from the Jackson Town Board. The city does have an orderly annexation agreement with, with Jackson Township. We've had that since approximately 2002. We're in the process of reviewing and updating that, that agreement. In fact, we had a meeting last night on it, so we've been meeting regularly on it, but the town board did ask, provided a letter, asked that, requested, communicated to City Shakopee that Jackson hereby request that no additional annexation applications be processed under the existing OA until the updated OAA is complete. So just wanted to reference that, make it part of the record, and ask that the council, if you have any questions for me, certainly entertain answering those.
Questions of staff, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I was at the township annexation meeting, and my comment was that that basically means what they're asking for would, it would essentially be a moratorium. And I know the state statute just changed on that and what the voting requirements are to do that, and I know we just came off of a moratorium not too long ago, so I understand their concerns, but this is, some of these requests are by, directly by the property owners.
Yep. We acknowledged the receipt of the letter.
Yes.
Last night and had some discussion. You know, obviously, we didn't, there wasn't, we didn't take any action or anything, so I think we'll just stand in receipt of that letter.
And just for your information, the requests are consistent with the existing agreement, and that's referenced in the draft resolution, so.
Other questions of staff? Questions of staff, if not, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would the applicant and/or their representatives like to come forward, make comment, or any resident want to make comment on this application for annexation? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Good evening, Mike Sewell, D.R. Horton Homes, we're the applicant on this. Just a couple clarifications, or one clarification, is we don't actually own the parcel yet, it's under contract. It's scheduled to close with the landowner here in the next couple of weeks. We're just finalizing a few things and our due diligence on the property, but we see no issues coming. And I understood, did see the letter from the township, but this square box is completely within the city of Shakopee, within the development, so it just would help make the utilities and all the connections within our development flow better and function better from the previous preliminary plat.
Yeah. Questions of the applicant? Counselor Lewis?
Did the, did D.R. Horton make the application, or did the current owner make the application?
We made it with combination with the current owner, they did sign the application also, they do know what's going on, and it's just the timing of our closing.
Right, I just want to make sure we got all our i's dotted.
Other questions of the applicant? If not, Mr. Sewell, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would any citizen, resident like to come forward and make comment on this application? Before we close the public hearing, I just want to ask, Mr. Thompson, a joint application, but one of, or one of the applicants is not even an owner.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, no, but the owner has signed the application, so that's.
Fine.
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a second by Counselor Mokel. Close the public hearing. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion, public hearing is now closed. Counselor Whiting?
I make a motion to approve resolution number 7872, a resolution approving the annexation of property formerly known as 12440 Marystown Road with PID number of 6-914004-2 and move its adoption.
Counselor Lewis?
Second.
Okay, and we got the PID in there, and so that was good. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to open a public hearing and a second. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, public hearing is now open. Mr. Noble, good to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Third in the series of four requests, I'm going to go back to the first screen. This request is for the parcel that's located at the northwest corner of Marystown Road and County Road 78 to the south. The applicant is Friendship Baptist Church. This is an enlargement of the area. They own approximately 40 acres of land, and much like some of the other applicants, are, are looking at some potential development opportunities of this property. So they have brought forward an application to the city for annexation into the city. And this request was reviewed by the Planning Commission, was recommended for approval. The request is consistent with the existing orderly annexation agreement, and staff is recommending approval of the draft resolution, which references compliance with the orderly annexation agreement. Entertain any questions?
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Counselor Lewis?
Isn't this kind of leapfrogging in annexation? I mean, we've got a big area that's not going to be annexed between there and the southernmost boundary of what we just approved.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, this request on this screen, and again, hopefully you have it in front of you, is for area located here. It is adjacent to city property by at least 50%, so it is consistent with the orderly annexation agreement. Again, the applicant is bringing the, the request forward, so they don't even need that 50%. All they need is 50 feet, lineal feet of attachment to the city, and they, they certainly do meet that, so they are in conformance with the orderly annexation agreement, so thank you for the question.
Most of these are standard, standard annexation through the, through a landowner option of our current agreement. There's three parts of that, what the township can do, what the city can do, and then the landowner, and I believe all these comply.
I would like to add one item, and it's referenced in the legal description that's attached to, to this resolution. There's 128th Street is a public street on the north side. The city boundaries are on the north side of that right-of-way. This parcel to the north is in the city, and therefore, because that road be surrounded on both sides by the city, we're also bringing that street, that public right-of-way into the city.
Keep that public right-of-way?
That is public right-of-way.
All right.
So that is included in, in this request. Thank you.
Further questions of staff? If not, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make comment in regard to this application? This is a public hearing. Is there a resident that would like to come forward and make comment on this application? This is a public hearing. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Public, public hearing is now closed. Counselor Mokel?
I make a motion to approve resolution number 7873, resolution approving the annexation of property formerly known as 12800 Marystown Road, PID 6-030001-0, and move the adoption.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, welcome to City Shockley. Council, uh, Councilor Lehman?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Second. I have a motion in a second to open a public hearing. Um, any, uh, further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now open. Mr. Noble? Good to see you.
Stranger, yeah. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Uh, the fourth of the four annexation requests that you're seeing tonight, this is one that the city is the applicant of. Um, this is property that is, uh, a, a, County Road sixty-nine runs kind of north-south at a diagonal, um, starting at Third and running down to U.S. Highway one sixty-nine. We're be, looking to annex some of the one sixty-nine highway right-of-way. Additionally, there's a small city-owned parcel, approximately four acres, that's adjacent to County Road sixty-nine that, again, the city owns, but it is outside the city limits, so we're asking to bring that in to the city. All in all, that's about ninety-eight acres, ninety-four of which is right-of-way. And this is essentially picking up, uh, last year, the council, if you can see this, annexed property along one sixty-nine just to the east, so it's, uh, just a kind of a continuation of, of picking up some gaps, um, of, of the county and state, uh, or the right-of-way, public right-of-way. Espec, especially this, this sliver along one, or sixty-nine, so, um, planning commission did review this, recommended unanimously for the approval. Staff has prepared a draft resolution. Again, this request is consistent with the existing orderly annexation agreement, stipulations in that agreement, so recommending that the council approve this request.
Yeah. Uh, questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, the one question I had on this is, uh, who then maintains County Road sixty-nine and the portions that are annexed of one sixty-nine?
I will attempt to answer this. I may defer some of this to...
Mr. Looney?
Mr. Looney, but, uh, if it's in the city, um, whether that is in the state, or county, or city, um, since it is in the city, would follow the regulation, or the policy that we have for other, um, state, county, city streets that we have within the city, so, would be no different. I'm not sure exactly how that is. Uh, Mr. Looney, I'm sure could answer that better than I could, but it would follow the, the rest of the, you know, one sixty-nine that runs through the corridor of the city, and the same with some of the county roads that are in the city.
So it'd be like one oh one, or...
One oh one.
Any other, if it's a county road?
It's just annexing land into the city limit.
Right.
Whatever the jurisdiction was before, it's still there afterwards.
So we don't have to build the bridge over one sixty-nine thirty years from now?
No. Unless we want to.
Right. Okay.
Could we put a toll bridge on one sixty-nine then? As a, welcome to our town. You can get, if you're coming to town, it's free. If it's, it's not, it's two bits or something. All right, further questions of staff? And the applicant in this, uh, in this case is the city of Shockley, is that correct?
We are the, the applicant. Again, the, the request is consistent with the stipulations of the orderly annexation agreement, so, um, much like we did with the one sixty-nine parcel to the east, kind of the same process.
Councilor Lewis?
Couple of benefits that I see is the piece of, the small, I believe you said it was three acres that the city owns over there?
Uh, three to four acres in this area right here.
Gonna make it a lot easier to sell as soon as it's annexed, because it'll become part of the bigger project. And then, uh, to the very south there, that borderline is gonna give us more face value, I guess, to the township, so that, um, you know, we will have a better orderly annexation in that area, because if the next person wants to come in, which I believe that landowner does, so I, I wouldn't doubt that I, we would see them very shortly.
Other questions of staff? If not, uh, would the applicant and/or their represent, oh, Bruce? Mr. Looney, did you have a comment on this? Okay.
Oh, it's, uh, just one comment. I mean, previously, we were not annexing roadway right-of-way.
Right.
And that did create some issues, um, when we did other developments, 'cause you're, technically it's in the township, or... So getting the right-of-ways in there is important. It's not just a matter of fact. It, it is essential to do that. So it's a good thing.
Councilor Lewis?
Um, we're annexing roadway right-of-way, but the roadway is the county's roadway, so they still have to maintain the right-of-way.
Correct, correct. That point we made, we talked about earlier, was ever the jurisdiction. But sometimes when you annex other parcels and you're going into a, the, the access is not in the city limits. It create, or, the roadway is not in the city limits. It, it just creates some issues. It's better to, for your city boundary, I mean, try to draw a boundary now without the roadways, and it gets, it gets a very irregular map. So it's good to annex a roadway.
Um, in all, in, uh, just in fair notification, we did, uh, uh, we did share all this information at the orderly annexation agreement the other day, so, uh, all, all four or five of these, so...
I'm tuned to add to that.
Further questions of staff?
We, in our standard process, we did send out review sheets, and we did include Jackson Township, and we had discussions with them, with all four sites, but in particular this site. And, uh, they have signed, um, with no issues on all four applications, so...
Thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to, resident like to come forward and make comment on this application? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, Councilor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Oh, I have a second by Councilor Lewis. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Councilor Lehman?
I offer Resolution number seventy-eight seventy-four, resolution annexing property from Jackson Township pursuant to an existing orderly annexation agreement as presented.
I have a motion in a second by Councilor Lewis. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to eight A-one, final loan documents for Anchor Glass. Michael will present. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a slight modification to the original Anchor Glass agreement. Um, originally, you know, they had requested a million dollars, working with the state and working with Anchor Glass, that was brought down to four hundred thousand, along with sixty-seven thousand dollars the city already had. So those numbers have been changed, and reviewing the documents, it, we found that there was a UCC requirement, which is a filing requirement on a piece of equipment. Anchor Glass has already provided the necessary guarantees to the state. The oven cannot actually have a UCC filed against it, 'cause it's a building. So, um, their attorneys and the state's attorneys have agreed to remove that requirement, which requires us to modify this agreement. So we still have security provided by Anchor Glass, but it won't be the actual oven that they're paying for.
Other security provided? Uh, it's not a new oven then, it's a rebuild.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. They're in the process right now of rebuilding the interior to extend its life.
When, when it was presented to us, was it considered a new oven?
Uh, Mayor and Council, no. Um, it was, it's always been a rebuild.
Always been improvements.
There's a re-bricking.
All right.
Okay.
That's fine. Uh, questions of staff?
Yeah, the sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, how did we come up with that number from the city, and where is it coming from?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, that was money that was from another MIF loan, uh, that rolled into what's considered the city's revolving fund. The state requires that that go into another MIF project, and it was identified that this was an eligible project, so they asked us to put that money in there.
Now that you mention that, I remember a previous discussion on that. Uh, one other question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Just to get a definition of the grantee, is that, who is that exactly?
So the city gets the money from the state, then we loan it to Anchor Glass's holding corporation.
For the pass, or? So we are the grantee?
From the, um...
So, and then as I read back in the, uh, possibility or everything here, that we have to abide by all the state rules and regulations. We are the go-between, between Anchor Glass and the state.
Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, that's correct. So you'll see probably shortly, one of these was given to another company in town. They did not meet their requirements, and so the states asked them to pay that back. So what will happen is, when that agreement comes to you, we'll actually be taking, getting a check from the company and just passing it back to the state, 'cause that's what our agreement is.
Money flows back and through. We've seen this twice in the, last year, I believe. Just want to make sure that we're indemnified on this, so if it goes south, they just go to the company and take the money there. They're not gonna be coming after us.
Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, that's correct. The only money that we have at risk is that sixty-five thousand dollars, 'cause that's actually sitting in the city's coffers, and we have security against that also.
But that was originally deed money anyway.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilor Lehman?
No, I was just gonna point that out.
Other, uh, questions of staff? If not, Councilor Whiting?
I'll offer Resolution seventy-eight seventy-nine, a resolution approving the loan of the Minnesota Investment Fund Grant to Anchor Glass Container Corporation, and the execution of the related documents, along with the modification of the grant agreement dated February twenty-third, two thousand seventeen.
I have a motion in a second by Councilor Mokel, sorry. Uh, further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Mo, motion carry, uh, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Councilor Lehman?
Will we take a five-minute? I think the next couple are gonna get lengthy, and I'd like to take a break.
Second.
Oh, a break, and the, by the same council members, there are no, no discussions allowed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, so we'll stand in five-minute recess. We'll reconvene this May second, two thousand seventeen, City of Shockley City Council meeting. We're gonna move ahead then to eight A-two, uh, sale of city property, and Michael will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the audience. This is a city-owned property on Highway one oh one. The city acquired this property through a land donation by Burmey Incorporated in June of two thousand twelve. The city paid the base level taxes, uh, for the year two thousand twelve as part of a settlement. And so we paid Scott County twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-seven cents on June seventh of two thousand twelve. The county then came back and gave us the city's portion of those taxes back. So it was about twenty or twenty-one thousand dollars was the actual purchase price, 'cause we paid ourselves, um, our portion of the property taxes. This is a recent survey that was completed by, um, Trosen Surveying. Um, there's basically three properties here today. There are two parcels across the front and a parcel... here today. There are two parcels across the front and a parcel in the rear. The proposal on, for your discussion tonight, is to sell both properties for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. One lot would go to Topaz Investments to construct site improvements and buildings for North Star Regional. The other lot would go to Doggy Do's, construct a new grooming, daycare, and boarding facility. One of the issues with this lot through the survey, the blue areas are going to be waterline locations, so there's currently a fire hydrant here. There's a requirement that that be extended over to the adjoining property and also up through the middle or wherever the center line becomes for the two properties. Also, through the survey and discussions with the city engineer, there are, I believe, two or three sewer pipes that are not recorded that will have to have a new easement recorded here. There's a Met Council high-pressure line to the lift station and a line back, and there's also a gravity sewer there. So there currently are no easements for that sewer. So what you really end up with is a, the other thing through the discussion is the county will not grant access to the state highway here anymore, so the access will be through the back here, through a already accord, recorded access agreement for both of these properties. And the buildable area kind of ends up in this general area and a much smaller property on the other parcel because of the sewer So the first user would be North Star Regional. They're a chemical dependency treatment and mental health care facility. They have a facility in Chaska. They were approached by Scott County to locate a facility in this area. They would do inpatient and outpatient treatment here and counseling services. The other tenant is Doggy Do's. That's a woman-owned local business. They're currently right in downtown. They will be cooperating with Topaz on the design, construction, and site work to build a state-of-the-art facility, increasing their grooming and boarding areas, and creating better separation for their daycare dogs. This is just a conceptual site plan, so this is a new private driveway that would come in. They would have shared parking up here that would serve the dog facility and also drop-off for the treatment facility. This would be kind of a large public lawn on their side, some additional parking in the back for staff, and a mini roundabout in the front for exiting. This would be the new building, approximately seven hundred, seventy-five hundred square feet for Doggy Do's. This would eventually wrap around the back here, would not extend this far back on the property, so it would just be a outdoor area in the rear. This is just a conceptual layout, so it's a pretty large improvement from their current facility. They would have an entrance both on the street and off that roundabout. Boarding facilities, the daycare facilities is in the back. And this is the conceptual architect's rendering what that facility would look like. This is the elevation from Highway one-oh-one with an entrance and then their main entrance off of that roundabout. This is the proposed elevation for the residential treatment campus, the mixture of different kinds of masonry and siding. They would have also a main entrance off the street with sidewalks, so both of these buildings would have entrances off the street.
Counselors? What angle are we looking at this from?
Mayor and Councilmember Lewis, this is from one-oh-one. Both of these, so this will be the facade of the dog care facility, and this will be the facade of the treatment facility. So here's that, Council, Mayor, this is the entrance they would have. This is their first floor that has meeting rooms and their eating facilities, and then there's two levels of inpatient rooms. So the next steps for this project, so tonight you're just approving a sale so it can move forward and do the necessary site work, but they have applied for conditional use permits that would be heard on June eighth. They will be doing constructability and financing feasibility. We would have to abandon and create new easements because this property is literally covered with easements at the moment, some of which we don't need anymore. And then we would do a development agreement that we'd bring back to you this summer, and they hopefully would begin construction this fall.
Great. Questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
What do we do with the trailers that are encroaching into the property?
Mayor and Council, we have been in contact with the city's attorney, and we will be working with that, with that encroachment. So currently, the plans, if I can go back to the site plan. So those encroachments, Mayor and Council, are right here. So they're not getting built on as part of this project, so we will work with them on moving them off. There was a question about whether we could sell this piece of property to the trailer park. It's not allowed under the law. They are a non-conforming use. You're not allowed under state statute to increase the non-conforming use, so by doing that, we actually would be violating the law, so we will have to work with them to get them off that piece of property.
Councilor Lewis? Yeah, the person that owns the trailer court that contacted me today, and I directed him to talk to staff. I was not aware that it's a non-conforming, so. Councilor Lewis, or Lehman?
Well, I would just point out that this is not unusual in old Shakopee. You know, this stuff was, how old, whether it's this or anywhere else in old Shakopee, that you just come across these types of things.
I will say, Mayor and Council, we looked at the county's aerial photographs, and this was a pretty uniformed trailer park up to a certain point where all the trailers are pretty similar, and then probably, I think in the nineties, they started changing to some larger ones, and the smaller ones went away, and that's when the encroachments started.
So this encroachment has been going on for a long time, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, I don't think that long. We will work with, we, the city attorney and I have had some discussions about.
I know there are some issues here, but, you know, this is an opportunity to sell some city land, put it back on the tax rolls. Councilor Lehman?
Is, what's the state law say hypothetically, if this land is under new ownership, could the new owners give a easement to the trailer park if they so desired, or would that be viewed the same as expanding a non-conforming use?
Mayor and Councilmember, I will defer to the city attorney on that question.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, any property owner, private or otherwise, can probably give permission for other people to encroach on their property, so not having looked at that specifically, it's something I can still work with Mr. Kurski on.
Some of these.
There's a way to get that, so a lot of these things have to get worked out, obviously.
This caution council here is, we talked about this issue, it's authorizing directing staff to go forward with a purchase on any of these little, or I shouldn't say little, some of these issues, it could be, we can't be negotiating here at the table, and we would need to, at our next meeting, go into closed session. Councilor Lewis? If the new owner wants to sell that piece, are they allowed to sell that piece to them, or is that going to violate?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I can talk to Mr. Kurski about that. There'd be other issues, this is going to be a platted lot. There's other issues about selling unplatted property, so there's a couple moving parts on this that we'd have, that we'd have to look at, but it's a possibility.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, we're in the process of figuring a lot of this out, and as we come to some sort of resolution, we'll bring in those decisions in front of council to be able to move forward.
Councilor Lewis? Part of the reason I'm a little concerned with that is that trailer park houses a lot of low-income families, and, you know, I'd hate to see two families because they're encroaching by, I don't know how many feet, but the one doesn't look like much, the other's a fair amount. I mean, they've been there for many, many years. I'd hate to see them be put out. My understanding that those trailers are not mobile anymore. They cannot be moved. They will be damaged severely.
Mayor and Council, another thing I wanted to mention is that this is going to be a three to four million dollar investment, and our quick calculations with Darren and I today is it'll generate between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a year in new property taxes, just on the city side, so it's a, was it wise investment way back when, when this was done, and I think that puts the property back to good use and puts it back on the tax rolls.
Councilor Lewis? One follow-up question. There's two different numbers in the packet here as to what's going to be invested. You got, in one, on the front page, it says it's going to be three million. On the back page, it says three-point-five. That's a considerable amount of money. I mean, what came up with the discrepancy, or is this numbers from the parties?
Mayor and Council, it'll probably be larger than that. We got two different numbers, and they're still working on their constructability. I think when we bring the development agreement back to you, we'll have an exact number in it, but it'll be well in excess of three million dollars.
Other questions of staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's a great opportunity. We've all, we talked about it well over a year ago, city-owned lots, and trying to, this was actually one of the ones that was identified. Councilor Whiting?
I think it's a great opportunity to move this property, get some stuff on the tax rolls. Doggy Do's is a, is a company that's been in Shakopee for a while, and it's great to see them growing and expanding, and I'm excited to see a regional facility in our neighborhood. I think that's a good thing, too. You had asked about how you wanted this presented for a resolution.
Well, yeah, I think, Mr. Reynolds, the action that you're asking for is, or Mr.
Mayor and Council, the city attorney and I drafted up a resolution, which is in your packet, that since we know we're going to have to come back for a lot of other things, it'll allow, it gives some comfort to the potential purchasers that can move forward and spend some money because we're fixing the price. I think we'll be back, once they get through their CUP and their constructability with the development agreement, that'll have the exact building that's sort of going there in the layout. I think there was some also concern that if we were to sell it and they were not to move forward to have a clawback by doing the development agreement, that will ensure that happens.
So the resolution is what we're looking for here.
Councilor Lewis? This is a question for the purchaser with the, the medical facility, if you want to call it that. Is that the facility you have in Chaska, five-star? Okay, I've got some connection with them. I dealt with some of their people, and they seem, seem very decent, well-deserving, and, you know, hard, they're working hard at taking care of their problem, and I think this is probably a good spot for it. It's going to, we just had a company redevelop the west end. Now we got some interest on the east end, so hopefully, you know, everything's going to, maybe we can get some more down that way. So I'm all in favor of it. Want to make a motion?
You got a comment?
Another question?
Yeah, I do have, I have a question. It's really not per se related to this, but the snowmobile issue keeps coming back. They used to go back behind this property, and now they go up across one-oh-one, down the sidewalk, and across the new bridge, and I know that that's not the best solution. So I hope we're still trying to work long-term on how to fix that.
Michael?
Mayor and Council, we'll work with that because we will definitely not be having snowmobiles go through here. However, Kyle on the planning staff, and will work with the applicant, has suggested that we work on a trail access and probably eliminate this one parking lot. Right now, we have kind of a friendly, no-bother agreement with the SMSC to cross their property, but this would be a more permanent solution with an easement, so we'll work with the applicant to see if we can make that work for pedestrian
Uh, Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number seventy-eight, eighty, authorizing the appropriate city officials to enter into a contract for sale.
Okay. Councilor Mokel?
Second.
Further discussion? Councilor Lewis? I just got one question for Bruce. You got a new location to pile your snow? I was going to, I was going to ask that, too.
Uh, yeah, we're working on that.
We're going to annex one.
It won't be his snow by then.
Yeah.
Uh, motion on the table? Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
One comment. I believe there's still snow down there.
It takes a while. Thank you very much. Now, let's move to eight, B-one, and Jennifer, Jennifer will present.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here asking for your consideration and the resignation of our city engineer and public works director, Bruce Looney. Did you want me to read the memo?
Did you what?
Did you want me to read the memo? I don't actually have a presentation.
Do you have some comments, or? Mr. Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you sweating yet?
I am now.
You know, it's, it's, it's no surprise that, that trying to replace Bruce would be a very, very difficult thing to do. He has literally built this city and, and knows more about what's underground than, than probably anybody else. That is why I have to actually say I'm, I'm not in favor of accepting this resignation. I think overall, you know, although we intend to move forward to try to find someone to keep his seat warm, that there's a, there's a lot of unknowns with having him not be the public works director and the city engineer, and a lot of questions that we might not have answers to, because if you realize, he's the last person, except for Councilor Lehman, that actually knows a lot of the history. Councilor Lehman has been on the council for seventeen years, eighteen years?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, and he is always good to be able to give us some history, but other than that, between him and Bruce, that just leaves Councilor Lehman. So I'm, I'm certainly not in favor of accepting this resignation. By the way, he turned this resignation in when I was not here, specifically, because he knew that I probably wouldn't accept it from my end, so with all due respect, I would simply say that this council should probably reconsider the accepting of the resignation.
Well, thank you very much. Councilor Lewis? Well, luckily Bruce is only a phone call away, so if we have a problem, I'm sure he'd be willing to help us out, and I believe one of his counterparts, Mr. Hollander, has been here, what, twenty-some years?
No, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
He'll be thirty-eight in August.
Yep.
So I'm sure he's got some of your knowledge tucked away, so hopefully we'll get through it. Councilor Lehman?
Is it beyond our authority to order the chief over there to cuff him to his chair for a while?
Counselor?
No, I, I don't want to accept this either. I think this is something we should table, but I do want to say that you do know where all the, the pipes are buried, and I would work out a consulting fee before you enact this deal. I want to, again, congratulate you on your awards, and you left the city in, in a, in a good state. I mean, the sewers are rebuilt, you know, things are working, the streets are fixed for the most part. We're work, there's still a few more, but we're getting there, and we're growing. You've done a great job, and you will be sorely missed. Go Bison.
Yes, go Bison. Well, just, I guess, you can take my resignation, but there also is a phased retirement option, so I will not necessarily be leaving the city. I'll be able to, we just hired two new people. Third one to fill in my shoes, so having, I mean, I've been ten years with Prior Lake and twenty-three years here, so my history with Scott County is, and being with the watersheds, I've been with Scott, Shakopee Basin, Credit River, Prior Lake Spring, Lake Water Shad District. I've been through all these agreements, and there's some details in some of these agreements that are very, well, I don't want to say hidden, but not a lot of people know what's in these agreements, you know, what the history is on it. So being able to be involved with the city, which I dearly have loved working for, is really a pleasure and a privilege for me, so I, you know, that's, that's why we worked out this agreement, and it's something new. I don't think, this is the first one we're doing in the city. So it's something a lot of cities are doing for transitioning of authority or power, just knowledge, to other people, so.
Thank you. Councilor Lewis? When does answer? Councilor Lehman?
Well, started here. Let me make a motion, accepting the resignation with regret of public works director Bruce Looney, effective May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, and approved the requested phased retirement option, and if it's a seconded, I'll speak to it.
Councilor Lewis? With great regret, I will second that. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, obviously I'm voting against my own motion, but Bruce, we go way, way back. We work together. We worked together for many, many years. Over the years, I've grown a great deal of respect for you and the work that you do. A lot of trust between us. I think that's important. You're the guy with all the answers. Whenever I needed an answer, you always had it or you could find it. I guess part of the sting is that you're gonna be around part-time when we need you the most, which means you really ain't going anywhere, so you might as well just stay. So I don't know what else to say, but thanks for your, your dedication and service to our community. It's deeply appreciated and you did a great job.
I'm just thankful for the position you're leaving us in. We've got very little to, as far as reconstructions to take care of. Everything's working. There's no big problems that I know of, and if there were, I'm sure you would have taken care of them. Thank you.
Mr. Looney, thank you from a grateful community. Some, some of our residents may not even understand how grateful they are. You've left our community in a better place than when you found it. And that's a great attribute of yours and thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Further discussion?
I'd like to say one thing is, you know, my tenure is shorter, but I think that no matter what project is before the city, you always have the answers that we need that, when we're looking for them. And I think that, you know, when we had our flood two years ago in different areas of Shakopee, to go out and drive around with you and you knew everyone and they knew you in those areas, and that was pretty impressive to me, that you would do that for our residents. So thank you.
Further discussion? There is a motion on the table. A second? Further discussion? Discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails unanimously.
Guess you gotta stay. Welcome back.
City Hall opens at eight o'clock tomorrow.
I want to recount.
Counselor Leman?
I make a motion to reconsider the...
I have a motion to reconsider. It was by a person that voted in the affirmative. A second's been made by Counselor Lehman.
That was also an affirmative.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Here, Bruce, council got your present.
You still have to re-adopt the motion?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, okay.
Oh, thank you, man.
Council got that for you.
It's a, it's a hearing aid.
Show everybody what you got.
A little smaller than you're used to using, isn't it?
You'll be able to use that.
Yeah, I can, I'll find a use for it.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept with regrets the resignation of city engineer, public works director Bruce Looney and move its adoption and a requested phased retirement option, effective May 31, 2017.
Second with greater regret.
I have a motion by Counselor Lehman, a second by Counselor Lewis. You're gonna be tough to replace. Thanks, Bruce. Motion on the table, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
You're a free man.
Tea time is eight o'clock. All right. Moving forward then to 8C1, censure resolution. And this was brought forward at the direction of city council here a couple weeks ago. Counselor Leman?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take this one. I worked with the city attorney to adopt, put this resolution forward. It's unfortunate that we have to go to this step, but I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 7859, a resolution of the city of Shakopee censuring. Counselor Mike Lewis?
I have a motion on the table and a second by Counselor Mokal. Further discussion? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to know the grounds.
I think they're listed here on page two. And we've talked about this. Actually caused fifty pages of email on the public, into the public realm. You know, this, for a city and, and someone that has known you for twenty years, this is, this is not easy.
The one email that I've been accused of sending to a citizen never was sent to a citizen. That was sent to Mr. Reynolds directly. Now, if he has a fit over being told what a person is thinking, maybe he needs to go get his big-boy pants and put them on because it's giving him a heads-up on what other people are thinking. You know, it's, it's, we're always talking about better relations with the public and we fail. We failed. Yeah. Charging someone double because they didn't get a permit, they're a third-generation business, to me, that's a failure.
Okay. This is about your behavior and your actions?
And that was what that email was about, and that's what started this whole thing.
Well, I kind of frame it, and you and I have talked about this many times. It, it started actually back in the fall of 2015 with, with you calling a sitting, two sitting council members' spouses at their employment.
You have proof of that?
Proof? I've talked to both parties that acknowledge that you called their employer.
I would like to see some proof.
Okay.
I mean, otherwise, you know, if there's no proof, this is a kangaroo court.
All right. Well, I'm just saying for me, for me. It started there and ended when you had, and then you call a local businesses insurance agent and try to get them to cancel insurance.
That is a false statement also.
And everything else in between. And we can sit here and publicly debate with more discussion? I find this very difficult for our city to go through.
Yeah, and I do, because it's all lies. Go talk to the insurance man, ask him if I called anybody.
I believe that this behavior must stop. I believe our city deserves better. I believe our residents deserve better. I believe it is about trust, integrity, morals, and we should be protecting the city, not creating a liability, Councilmember Lewis. I think it's about personal responsibility.
I believe so, too, but I guess I would like to see proof.
All right.
You talked to the insurance man. I never called him. You can, you know, if you can show proof on that I called somebody's business, bring it forward. Bring a witness. I mean, you know, otherwise, this is totally BS.
All right. Counselor Leman?
You know, this, this goes beyond any specific email or, or, or discussion. This goes to your relationship with the fire department and going around the, the chain of command that we've set forth, because we hire the, the city administrator, the fire chief, he hires the fire chief who runs the, the fire department. We've had all sorts of issues there. We've had some issues where you've misrepresented the city and said that the city wanted to buy some property and, and the body never made that discussion, we never made that decision.
The instance you're speaking of there, the person who has an interest in the property, ask me why he got a call from Mr. Kurski. Mr. Kurski, I had had a conversation with him previous to that. He told me he had called that person, hadn't gotten a call back. And he told me that the reason he called was he wanted to talk to him about purchasing the property. The gentleman in question asked me why Mr. Kurski was calling. I told him why.
The city council never made that decision.
I do this person and say, I have no idea.
This body makes decisions like that. That doesn't cut, I mean, there can be some inquiries.
Mr. Kurski was calling him to ask him if he was up for selling his property.
But it went to the level of harassment and that's what...
I'd like to know where that came from.
So...
As far as the fire department goes? If you read my article in the paper? Okay, we've got problems there. Nobody wants to address them.
The council doesn't address those problems.
That's for HR.
Somebody has to address them. The person in charge of addressing them is not addressing them.
Again, that's chain of command. They need to go to their supervisor, they need, we have an HR department now. That is how that is handled. It does not handled at our level.
I think...
We've got guys complaining to me...
Then you should be telling them to go to their supervisor.
They are afraid to because of repercussions.
And then they should be going to the HR department. There's a chain of command.
They are afraid to because of repercussions from the former HR director. So we've got a lack of trust in the fire department. They come to me because I have a friendly here and I listen.
I think, I think...
I tried to deal with this the way it's supposed to be. I've taken it to administration, administration doesn't want to do anything.
I think you don't trust administration. And the, the staff, I remember when the current city administrator was hired, one of the reasons that you voted for him was that he stood up for his staff. And I think that part of this behavior, as noted in the resolution, is about trying to protect staff from an overreach here and standing up and protecting staff. Protecting our residents from this type of behavior. The, the newspapers filled with resol, with censor. North Branch, mayor's council member face censure April of 2015. Maple Grove, council member steps down after censure. New Brighton city council rebutes after removed from position and censored, four of sixteen. Councilmember Neely spaces post-election ranker and is censured, that was twelve of sixteen. And one of my favorites, Lake Elmo, councilman, short, short, claims fall short, backed by audit, is censured, and that was just July of last year. This is not a proud moment, but I've talked to you probably a dozen times about it, including with the city attorney. I know councilmember Lehman has. I know city administrator Reynolds has. We're just gonna try to see if we can get this censure through and try to protect our city. Councilmember Lehman?
First, let me, let me say that at the last meeting that when this came up, I stepped away from the table and that was improper and I apologize. When I was talking about the relationship I had with Bruce over the years, and you brought it up in your, your last couple of statements, there's, there's issues with trust, obviously, going on. And, you know, I, I thought about this, that's the last meeting, pretty heavy because you're right, this, this whole process is just a, a black cloud over the city in general and it's just really unfortunate. I'd like to see it, you know, I keep asking myself, how do we not do this? You know, it's, it's really hard to trust somebody that you don't know. And, and I'll be honest, myself, we have a lot of new staff folks. Some of, some I haven't even met yet, some I've met maybe twice. I don't really know these people and it's not, it's not anybody's fault, per se. If anything, it's more my fault because my work schedule's pretty, pretty daunting and, and it's hard for me just to, to get out and come spend time and meet people. So somehow we get, we've got to figure out how to know our staff. And it's, like I said, it's nobody's fault. It's difficult because every, we've got a lot of new, new faces, a lot of changes are happening. Some I'm personally having a hard time grappling with just because it's been done differently for so many years. That doesn't mean it's good, bad, or indifferent. You know, and I think it takes, it takes all sides to work on an issue. You know, it's just, I don't know. I don't know what else to...
How am I supposed to trust, or how am I supposed to trust someone who is two days late in sending out a report? I asked him after the second day when it might be forthcoming, and I'm told when he's damn good and ready. Now, if that's not insubordination, I have no clue what it is.
And you brought that up a couple times and it was in your, in an email, too. And I think Mr. Reynolds is one of the hardest-working person in our community. We just had a very late night council meeting, two nights before that, and then we have a council member demanding a, and it was an administration report. It really wasn't like city business.
And it demanded, I asked when we might see it.
Oh?
You know, there's a difference between asking and demanding.
And I, I think as we go through, so we gotta be bigger than it. I think that as a council person, representing the city, I think we should be set to a little higher standards of professionalism, trust, gathering information. The, the whole method, methodology of what I've seen, Mike, to me, and I, I've been in public service a while, it's not my cup of tea. And I think that, as I said earlier, I think the city of Shakopee deserves better, I think the residents deserve better, I think the city staff deserves better. And some of us have tried very hard to talk with you over the last year or two, or year or so, and it, it, it hasn't changed. And so this censure makes perfect sense at this time. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, one of the things that I was thinking about as I thought about this, boy, there's a mouthful. Under our current policy, if a citizen comes up to the podium with a concern, you know, cracked sidewalk, whatever the case might be, our policy is that we, we, we don't discuss it at that point and we just kind of push it over to staff. And, you know, when a council member, any of us, bring up a concern under council concerns, you know, we, as a, as a body, need to be doing a better job of hearing these concerns and, and, you know, some of them we don't want to do anything about, some of them we want staff to give us more information, some of them we want certain actions to be taken. And, you know, I don't know if the best approach is to just kind of throw it out in limbo and see what happens with, with a concern. You know, I think maybe we need to tighten that up to where if there is a concern brought up, maybe there needs to be a consensus of, of council on should we be doing something with it or not? And if not, which is fine, at least the general public who we represent knows that that particular item is of no concern to the majority of council. And, and that's okay. That puts the accountability where it belongs. And same with a, a resident, if they come forward with a concern about something, and I understand that we don't want to dissect the whole thing on the spot because we don't have both sides of the story on a, on, on the issue. But the issue, once we do get all the information or staff gathers that information, should come back to the public setting for that discussion on do we do something or not?
And there's a motion for that, to, motion to direct staff to bring back information so we can discuss it at a future meeting. So that's a, that can be done.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And I just think, I'm trying to look into the future and how we can better address some of this.
No, I'm trying to relate to what you're saying. And actually, I was at a mayor's conference over the weekend and I know you were trying to, we had a, a very big discussion about residents at the podium and how you take in that information, how you possibly limit the discussion or limit the time, limit the discussion, and then at council's direction, you know, you, you empower staff to look into that. And then maybe the comeback while we looked into it and there wasn't anything to it, or yes, this is a problem, or...
Right. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, obviously, some of these issues Mike feels very strong about. And, and, you know, you can't, I don't condemn a man for bringing forward issues that are, are concerning to him, whether it's a citizen or anybody else within our city. We're all in this together trying to make things, our city, better. So to me, it's, it's not necessarily the concern, that's the issue. The issue to me is how it's dealt with after it's brought up.
Well, I think that also, one has to be respectful. I talked about civic responsibility, held to a higher responsibility. What if, what if we discuss an item and we've all done it? That we debate an issue and it, and it votes on it and it doesn't go your way? You know, I'm talking to you ten minutes later. I'm talking to you ten minutes later. It doesn't go, it's not right. I think Mike, I think we have a fantastic fire department. I think if we went around to the people that they've impacted on it every single day, how many service calls do we get a year? Nine hundred? If we had all the folks that were impacted on those nine hundred visits, I'd say the fire department does a great job. And same with our police department, same with our public works, same with, I think we're, I think we have very high standards in our community. But Councilmember Lewis thinks there's a big problem. Some of this stuff is five, six, seven years old. Our, our fire department has changed. It's actually gotten better. And we're talking a lot about the fire department, but the breadth of of overreach and not accepting and continuing to, you know, walk into city, into, into HR and demand interview records and, and resumes-
Excuse me, I did not walk into, I made a friendly phone call and asked if there was anything that my daughter could better herself with the next interview somewhere.
Data, private information that's not available. That's not available. I know that in an interview when you don't get a job, I, I do know this, that when you don't get the job, you don't get nothing. And you want that feedback. But every company-
You got a form letter that says-
Yep. Thanks a lot. And you, you just gotta go and chalk it up to, and you don't know really where to go. But Mike, I've known you for a lot of years. I keep a list of who you've wanted to have fired in our city for the last twenty years, and it's almost every personnel. You wanted the former fire, or the former police chief fired. You wanted the, the list goes, is endless. And I-
I've got two questions, and I'll just let you do what you're gonna do anyway.
Thank you.
What does it take to get something put on the docket? I've been told one council member can request something put on the docket. Is that true?
Wait, no, you have to bring it up and get a, then we would have to direct staff to put this on the, on the agenda.
So we have to all agree that it's gonna be put on the docket? Okay, that was different from what I was told. I was told one council member can make a request and it's supposed to be granted. I requested that and it was not granted.
All right, that's fine. Let's-
Okay, second point.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I can clear that up, independent of this issue that's before you right now. But typically, I think, I defer to Mr. Reynolds on this. If a council member wants to put something on the agenda, they can request it, but it's up to a majority of the council to keep it on the agenda. So that's why you approve the agenda at every meeting. If, if you want something not to be on the agenda, you can take it off.
So one member can get it put on, but if they want to take it off, it can be taken off?
By a majority.
By a majority at the beginning of the meeting.
But it can be put on?
Yes.
Okay, I made a request. It was not granted. Okay?
But I believe we had a separate discussion that we said it, we wouldn't put something on the agenda unless it was a, agreed to.
I would like to have some ground rules so I understand what's considered insubordination from staff.
Who's insubordinate?
I'll get it to you when I'm damn good and ready. I talked to a former mayor that told me that he would have had that person fired immediately.
Okay, we can talk about what you talked about. I can talk about what I talked about. I represented our city in Northern Minnesota today with eighty other mayors. Half of them didn't know what was going on in our community. The other half did. Those are tough conversations I had to carry in our city.
Can we just get an answer of what insubordination is going to, can we get a definition? Because there's nothing in the city handbook. I've looked it up.
I don't know.
So in other words, staff can do it.
I don't know what you're getting at, what your point is.
I guess the way I've been treated by staff-
Okay.
They had a door slammed to my face to the point where the wall stuck.
This is not about how you have been treated. It's about how you have treated others. And that's just how this stands. And, you know, I thought there'd be some personal responsibility here tonight, but Councilwoman Whiting?
I'll call the question.
Is there a motion in the second?
Yeah, there's a motion in the second on the table. No further discussion.
That's right.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Did I hear a vote?
Aye, yes.
Four with a one-up standing. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to eight C two, our monthly financial review. And Darren will present.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, give me one second here. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Before you tonight is our, our monthly financial report for the month of April. Obviously, through April, we're one-third of the way through the year. Just a couple of things that we usually mention is that, you know, obviously, our revenues and our expenditures aren't necessarily equally recurring over the twelve-month period. So we have ups and downs depending on the, the point in time in the year. Looking at our revenues a little bit through the month of April, you can see that our revenues at this point in time were at twelve percent total, and that's obviously due to our property taxes. They make up a majority of our, our revenue side of that. So looking at that taxes line, you actually do see that year-to-date, we have received seventy thousand dollars in taxes. Well, those aren't necessarily property taxes. Those are actually lodging taxes that we receive from the hotels, motels in the, in the community that we pass on to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So that's why that amount is there. If you look at the special assessments for the year-to-date column there, that's actually a negative number for, it shows up as a positive here, but it's a, a negative revenue amount. So that's a negative seventeen thousand. And that's actually due to the payment to Republic Services for delinquent garbages. So we shore up Republic Services for their garbages, garbage, delinquent garbage bills, and then we assess those onto property taxes. So we'll receive those throughout the year as we receive our property taxes in June and December. Looking at our licenses and permits, last year was obviously a stellar year on that end of it. We were down substantially from last year, but we are right on target where we had budgeted for twenty, twenty seventeen on that end of it. So we still have a strong license and permit sector. It's just not where it was at this point last year, and that may change with developments potentially coming in as well, too. So... And then lastly, on the revenue side of it, the, the charges for services, we had three hundred and fifteen thousand or three hundred and sixteen thousand come in, in April. A lot of that is due to, we had about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in recreation revenue coming in, and that includes ice sales at the Ice Arena, membership sales at the community center, programming, rental revenue, et cetera. We also received a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars from Spuck as far as their, that's for their April payment in lieu portion of that, that they, they pay as a percentage of their revenue generation. And then we had about thirty-three thousand dollars in planning application fees. So if the planning application fees are an indicator of potential development for licenses and specifically permits, that's a, that's a good indicator there as well, too. So overall, we're obviously at that twelve percent mark, but if you look at the individual line items, they're all kind of right in that appropriate line at this point in time. So. Any questions on the revenues? Otherwise, I'll bop onto the, over to the expenditure side of things. And this is, blew up a little bit more than you can see here, but this is individual department then within the general fund. And as I mentioned earlier, we're one-third of the way through the year. If you look at here, our expenditures to date totaled about twenty-five percent. So we're, you know, eight percent to the good at this point in time. Our total expenditures to date are just over six million dollars compared to last year. It was at five point eight million. That's, that's normal and accounted for within our, within our budgets, and it's mainly due to filling of personnel vacancies as well, too, over the last year or so. And then also, we have the additional Ice Arena sheet as well, too. So we have increased operating expenditures there as well, too. Obviously, all departments are kind of within a few percentage points of that thirty-three percent mark or well under that mark at this point in time. So I should note that, again, looking at this a little bit, and for my future financial reviews, I'm gonna move them from the first meeting of the month to the second meeting of the month. That'll give me a few extra days to get year-end or month-end processing done. So for this month, month of April, really isn't closed out till probably end of this week. So we got some things that, on the revenue and the expenditure side of things, that would probably benefit from providing this report at the second meeting versus the first meeting. So, but all in all, it's, you know, in the ballpark at this point in time. So... So then council also requested to start looking at the Ice Arena and Community Center revenues and expenditures as those facilities come online. Obviously, the Ice Arena came online late December, early January. You can see their revenues to date are at about two hundred and forty-eight thousand compared to this time last year, which is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So they're over a hundred percent greater than they were this time last year, which would make sense. If we've got two sheets ice, we, hopefully, we can double the revenue. So... And then if you look at the expenditures, they're obviously gonna be higher as well, too. We're gonna have higher operating costs. Associated with that, our, our wages and benefits are about fifty percent higher than they were last year. But they're still within, within budget at this point in time. And obviously, our operating expenditures are about, just about double as well, too, but what, within what we expected from a budget standpoint.
Darren, as we build this data, especially on the Ice Arena, and we will, you know, the community center's here, but now we're gonna get a pool here in a couple of months. This is good startup data that we're gathering, right?
Absolutely. It's so very, it's so very preliminary. It's, it's gonna be tough. You gotta kind of take it with, with a grain of salt on this end of it. But we gotta start somewhere, and this is, this is the time to start it. So it'll be interesting as, as we look at the community center revenues, that portion of it, those will obviously change. And when the rest of the community center starts to come online now this summer, we'll really start to be able to be at the full speed of operations. And then obviously, it'll take some time to get comparables of different times of the year, what's, you know, when's your peak, when's your not-peak times, and things like that. But, you know, from the revenues side of it, you know, we're, community center side of it, I think the big membership push that we did this spring, you know, proved beneficial on that end of, from a revenue standpoint. Wages and benefits or wages, personnel costs are up a little bit, but we did add a couple of new positions there, which is gonna accommodate the, the increased traffic flow and programming and operational size of the facility itself. So at this point, like the mayor, like you said, mayor, it's, it's kind of a starting point, and we just kind of take it as, as it comes. But I think it's good to review it and keep on top of it and, and understand where we stand.
I think that's important. Councilman Lehman?
Question. The operating expenditures for April year-to-date actual twenty sixteen, fifty-eight thousand. And then for twenty seventeen, April year-to-date actual, it's about double, a hundred and fourteen. But then if we go down to operating expenditures for the community center, April year-to-date actual twenty sixteen, a hundred thousand, twenty seventeen, almost the same.
Right. And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, the community center itself really doesn't have, had that much more space yet.
So prior to the expansion fully coming on?
Right. Once that pool area gets operational, then I think those all, those are increased substantially at that point in time. So right now, I think we're pretty status quo. We don't probably have a whole lot of extra space at this point that we're maintaining, but-
And we're seeing a doubling on the ice side because that's up and operational?
Absolutely, correct.
Okay, all right.
And, and you've backed the Ice Arena information from last year out of the community center numbers from last year?
Correct. Yep. These are, they have their own separate business units, so we were able to, to get that information directly from the twenty sixteen piece of that. So, and obviously, the Ice Arena, the revenues won't be as high now in this offseason as we move into the- They still sell quite a bit of ice, but it's not as, as fast and furious as it is during the prime time during the, the winter months and such. But we can obviously compare it to this time last year as well, too. So...
Excellent.
So that's about all I have. Anything further?
Darren, always. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, liaison administration. Councilor Lewis?
I met with the chamber. I don't remember the date, last month. They were very happy to finally see a representative since the last one failed to go after having one bad meeting and being questioned. And yesterday, I was, I was at Spuck, and we had a good meeting. They barely had a quorum. I did meet the gentleman that has the problem up in Clarny Hills. No verbal blows, physical blows were taken. So I believe there's nothing going on there. Mr. Crooks was very happy to see me, and they had a basic meeting. Nothing major was reported. They talked about the waterline connection out on the east end that the city, we had some work on here tonight. And we agreed to it. They agreed to it. So it's gonna move forward. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Lehman?
Two, the weekend paper on Sunday, what was it, Tribune or whatever I get at home? Nice little article about Prior Lake adopting the resolution supporting the river crossing. They quoted my comment in there, which was basically what council already approved, that there's just no doubt that the southwest quadrant of, of the metro area needs capacity of crossing the river, and waiting thirty years is just not realistic. I did attend the annexation, orderly annexation group last night. Worked hammering through the issues, you know, from what happens if somebody's sore is, septic is brand-new and we're on our way by. And, and, you know, just a lot of details, pretty big document. So...
Got it. Thank you. On April nineteenth, I attended the Scott County Leadership Group and Scale had a presentation at the old facility there in Jordan. So that was great. On four-twenty, I had a mayor's meeting of Scott County. On April twenty-fourth, we, I attended the Shakopee Business Leadership Group. Staff gave a little overview of the comp plan and what we're looking at as we move forward. So I thought that was pretty good. Also, on four-twenty-four, attended the Scott County Comp Plan Visioning. They had about forty or fifty people there. Commentator breaking it all down of what they're looking for in a county level, and then how that relates to our city. So I thought, well, that was pretty good. Went to Main Street, Shakopee. Lots of energy in that group last Thursday. Many councilmembers were there. Over the weekend, I did attend the Mayor's Association, Minnesota Mayor's Association, put on the, by the League of Minnesota Cities. Saw a presentation on tourism Minnesota. Pretty big deal. I'd like to talk more with the director there and see the impact and dial it down to actually Shakopee. Shoreline management, we were talking about water and runoff and how to buffer. Also, did talk with Representative Tom Emmer about our river crossing. Put in a big plug along with the mayor of Jordan. And last night, I attended the orderly annexation agreement, and hopefully, we can make some progress here soon. Councilmember Lewis?
We all attended the Main Street?
All the council members?
Yes.
You were there?
No. You're talking the Flower Basket deal?
Yeah, Main Street, the banquet the other night, last-
The Flower Basket, yes.
The Thursday, Friends of the Main Street, they call it. Yes.
Shakopee Downtown.
Yeah. What's it called?
Shakopee Downtown.
I think they changed the name.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I had. Councilmember Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April twentieth, we had the Community Center Input Committee and discussed the opening of the first floor. Hopefully, next week. The new fitness equipment was arriving this week.
First upstairs or downstairs?
First floor would be the upstairs.
Main level at entry?
Main level, yep. Down, most of the downstairs is open, but the pool area is, and the locker rooms area. So that would include the fitness studio, the, which is the fitness room and then the fitness studios. I'm not sure when the daycare stuff is. The, the indoor playground will be roughly-
That was gonna be last because we need the fitness equipment out of there.
Right. Yeah. So that's kind of one of those puzzles where you move one piece and the other one. The indoor playground is roughly to be arriving at the end of May and installation sometime in early June. So that's gonna be fun. Plans are all set for that. On the twenty-fourth, went to my, the Shakopee Diversity Alliance International Festival Committee. And just for your information purposes, since I'm no longer the liaison, I was elected chair of the international festival. And we hope to get more people involved and people to donate and people to volunteer. On Wednesday the twenty-sixth, I attended the first, my first MVTA board meeting. Summary of the agenda would include approval of a grant from the Met Council for Mvest dollars of four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We received a presentation from Dakota County on their east-west transit study. We also approved Canterbury Park, an MVTA. We have entered into kind of a joint marketing agreement where they will wrap one of the buses with Canterbury advertising, and Canterbury will in turn advertise for Minnesota Valley Transit. We also amended the budget due to decreases from the Mvest forecast for twenty seventeen. So transit dollars are starting to tighten up, and it's gonna be a concern.
I heard the fares, fares might go, go up, too.
That wasn't discussed, but I wouldn't doubt that's gonna be coming, coming ahead. On the twenty-seventh, I got to attend the Greystones thirtieth anniversary with a couple of you folk. Uh, the twenty-seventh, I got to attend the Greystones thirtieth anniversary with a couple of you folks, and I also attended the Shakopee Downtown, the Main Street Flower Basket fundraiser, and awards were given to Billy Wormskersian, Rar Malting, and Scott O'Brien. I also had the opportunity to, uh, uh, on Saturday, to do Shakopee's Cleanup Day. And, uh, many people were involved, I wanna thank staff for all of that. Uh, would like to request staff, uh, work on some of those traffic concerns, uh, on Fourth Avenue. Uh, we pretty much shut down Fourth Avenue because it's part, people were parked and driving down all sides of the road. So if staff can maybe bring something back and work on that, I'd appreciate it.
That's a.
Yes, sir, we've already.
A function of success.
Well.
And, and we've, we've already been kinda drafting how to.
I made two trips, I think others made a few more, but, uh, it's a, it's a great project, uh, it cleans up the city, and, uh, uh, thanks to the Rotary Club for all their donations to bridging, and, uh, um, you guys did a good, good job. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Councilwoman?
Um, I also attended Greystones anniversary on April twenty-seventh, and, um, then afterwards, I had our, um, SDA's Community Policing, um, presentation, um, so I was unable to go to the Flower Basket fundraiser, but, um, our own Chief Tate was one of the, um, members of the panel, and he did an excellent job of relaying how, if there are problems, come to him, and that he wants to hear those, and I think that get, came across very well that night, um, so I thank you Chief for that. Um, and then, um, on Friday night was the thirtieth fifth anniversary of, um, Southern Valley Alliance for Bettered Women, um, their Jeans and Gems event at Mystic Lake. They serve the women of Scott and Carver County, so it was great to be there for that.
Thank you, and you can still make a donation to Downtown Shakopee.
I know.
Administrator report, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just FYI, both Nate and I will be leaving tomorrow, um, sometime around ten, eleven, uh, AM to head to Nisswa, Minnesota for the, uh, annual, uh, Minnesota City Managers, uh, Conference, and we'll be there until Friday, um, late afternoon. Uh, we have public work directors interviews, since unfortunately, my efforts to get you not to accept the resignation fell on its face, at least, uh, at the end of the day. Uh, we will have those, uh, on Tuesday, nine May. We have five individuals that, uh, we're bringing in. Councilor Mokel, uh, it's her turn up to be the, uh, representative on the, uh, the Hiring Committee. Uh, Mr. Loney has agreed to, uh, be a, a big part of that, obviously. Uh, but we've, uh, clearly we've got some, uh, big shoes to fill, and not simply because you wear size thirteen. Um, I, I, I did want to mention that, uh, we're losing a member of our staff, uh, Sam DiMaggio, uh, who has done a lot in the last couple of years for our, our economic development. Uh, to say that she was a superstar, or is a superstar, is, uh, uh, you know, pretty much known to all, that's how she was robbed from us. Uh, she essentially wrote her own check, uh, uh, for the city of La Sure, uh, and they're getting someone that'll actually help them, uh, to move their city forward. Uh, I will tell you that I'm incredibly excited about our future, uh, when it comes to economic development, and, uh, um, Michael and I have been working on several projects. Um, you're going to be very, very happy, uh, in the next several months with some of the things that, uh, we're gonna be able to bring in front of you. Uh, those things that we've talked about in the past, and, uh, uh, I'm pretty excited about it, uh, as we continue to move forward, building on all of the success that, uh, Sam brought for us, uh, so, uh, clearly the best to her in the future. Uh, and I believe that's all I have, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, yeah, on Sam, uh, uh, with regret as well, we did honor her a little bit at the Main Street event. And then, uh, lo and behold, I'm up at a mayor's conference, run into the mayor of La Sure.
You run into him hard, or?
And, uh, so we had a very tense discussion about.
Diplomatic.
Stealing employees and whatnot, and, uh, I do believe that a thank you note is gonna be on the way now, that he got the picture perfectly clear. Um, but, uh, they're very excited, and I told them they are very lucky. Uh, I said, "We are disappointed," uh, I might've used a different word, "that he stole our employee," but I did tell him that he's getting a true champion, um, and like I said, I told him I'll be waiting for the thank you card, so. That's the report from the La Sure mayor.
No, I, I'd like to add, you know, Sam will be missed greatly in, uh, in our community. Uh, she is moving up, so she's improving her, her position, so that's good to see. Um, but that's gonna fall back on, uh, Mr. Kersky and his staff again for now, and, uh, um, we're looking for great things, you know.
Thank you.
Uh. Mayor, when I got, when I got the news, I shot her a quick email and I CC'd the city administrator on it, and it basically said, uh, "Thanks for all your service to the community, to the community of Shakopee and, and best wishes in your future endeavors." So.
All right. Um, Councilwoman?
Uh, and just to add to that, I, I sent her an email right away too, and I said, "I hope this is a step up and not sideways," because, um, I'm more happy that it's step up, so, but yes.
Great country out there, I mean, she's getting the best of all worlds.
Oh, right.
And the Green Giant.
Right?
Well, they don't wanna talk about the Green Giant anymore.
Well, very good, uh, thank you all. Uh, other business, any other business, Councilor Lewis?
Uh, when might we see the downtown realm proposals? It's been quite a while, we're losing time on the bidding season. I thought we would have those by now.
Mayor and council, we're, we'll be having a ninety percent plan review, I believe, on Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. The construction managers on board, and they've been working with, uh, WSB.
Thank you.
So you're ninety percent next week, is that the answer?
Yes, sir, the goal, their contract requires them to be fully completed by the end of May, and I believe we will have our construction manager out getting bids shortly.
Councilor Lewis?
I, my next question is directed to human services, um, or HR, I guess, human relations. Um, when might we get a definition of what I asked for earlier?
I'll, I'll take this question, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds?
Councilor Lewis, I've, I've answered this question for you, uh, I CC'd all of council on this question. Uh, you have your answer.
Just to inform council, we are redoing and proposing employee handbook re- renovations, I can't think of another word. Um, those will probably be brought to you in June, so we'll have some additional information as well.
Thank you. All right. Um.
The answer, the answer I got was very vague, I would like.
Well, again.
Revisions, that's the word.
You put it out there, and then it's unacceptable.
I couldn't think of it either.
Yeah, well.
Motion to adjourn to May sixteenth, twenty seventeen at seven PM.
Okay.
I have a motion of second to adjourn to May sixteenth. Councilor Whiting, Councilor Mokel was the second. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, our meeting is adjourned at nine fourteen.